It is coming. Okay. My keys just fell. I think this is for the mouse.
Oh, okay.
There's one on this side.
Yeah, you can just drag it onto the desk, Tom.
Okay.
Hey, Alan. Good to see you.
You know, our internet.
Brought a good work out there.
Okay. Yeah, and then I'll hand you the certificates. Okay, good. Good. Okay. Okay, good. Good. I'm glad I could be over to a little certain, but good.
Nah, that turned out really fine.
They even liked my jokes. Looks like nobody has been sitting in a chair since this. Looks kind of like getting this thing down on the floor. I guess that was a total Alex, huh?
Soccer shoe. Where's your good shoes?
Oh, good. Good. No, looks like I got something like soccer shoe. How are you? Are you our council for today?
Like four deep in leather.
There, it was something to break, I didn't have anything to put here.
Well, I had a more, I had a Japanese martini last night. Lot of martini.
Oh, okay.
Japanese onions.
Yeah.
Three finger martini. About did me in.
Time you got on your iPad? What time you got on?
Eight fifty-eight.
So it was, it was. So we're two minutes away?
Yeah. I told her just to, I just sent her texts this morning, she's, it was late last night, I just said, "Just turn it off." I figured she just got on a bad cycle maybe.
Yeah. Easy, easy, there's an easy, easy test to see.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh.
Thermoset. Oh, it's nice.
The forty-dollar thermos.
Yeah, and I have them at home. I'll check that. Brought them together.
Put them together.
Put, and then wait.
The thermoset, all it does, it's a contact, puts them together.
Yeah.
So you put them together.
Perfect. Okay. Yeah.
Are we there, Steve?
One minute.
One minute?
I got nine o'clock.
Okay.
Good morning and welcome to the Tulare County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the true will with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I please be seated?
Okay, we'll start out with Supervisor Matters. Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, we had a nice, short trip to Washington DC last week. I thought that the meetings went very well and we were very well received. In Washington, I think that we were able to bring some information to especially the Forest Service staff. We had a meeting that included some very high officials at the United States Forest Service and I think they were a bit surprised by some of the information we shared about what is going on in our own backyard and our national park and national forest ground. Hopefully, we will be seeing some increased efforts on the part of the Forest Service to maintain their property. And in the future, I'm hopeful that the US Forest Service law enforcement will be really stepping up to lead some major marijuana eradication efforts on United States forests and park ground. So that was very, very positive. Today, this afternoon, the Leadership Tulare Class is going to have their County Government Day. I look forward to that presentation and spending a little bit of time with them this afternoon. I want to give special thanks to Sheriff Mike Boudreau, DA Tim Ward, CAO Mike Spada, and Mental Health Director Tim Durick for their willingness to participate and lead a discussion with that group for a portion of their afternoon based on subject matter they were curious about. And I really do appreciate those individuals who are participating in the Leadership Tulare Program for their interest in basically helping Tulare to become a better community. Also, this Friday at nine AM is the Tulare County Special Olympics. That will be held at Bob Mathias Stadium in Tulare. That's always a great event and I really appreciate all the effort that the Kiwanis Clubs put on to make that event happen in Tulare. And then Kiwanis Clubs also have another event this weekend and also the Office of Education helps a lot with the Special Olympics. The Kiwanis Club is also putting on an event this Saturday at the Tulare Outlet Mall that is the Miracle Mile of Quarters Event. And Rita Woodard, our Auditor Controller, always does a great job of reminding me about that event. They do a great job and it's amazing the amount of money that they're able to collect and raise at that event in Tulare. So I just wanted to make a plug for a few events. I know that Mr. Washam is going to be talking about a very exciting event in the community of Early Mart and that's the grand opening of a new McDonald's. And he will tell you a little bit more of information in detail about that at Public Comment. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Thursday, we did have the first five Hands-on Heroes Awards and I'm happy to announce that we had several of our Health and Human Service agency employees recognizing the services they provide. It was a great event. We had over two hundred people there and it was a great opportunity to honor those that served children from pre-birth to five years old. Wednesday, had a Retirement Board meeting. One of the requests, Mr. Chair, was again that we find a date sometime in the near future to have a joint meeting with the Retirement Board. Wanted to pass that on to you. Tomorrow morning, the Visalia Economic Development Corporation meets at seven o'clock. I'll be in attendance there. At that meeting Friday, we have an Audit Committee meeting as well as Friday morning, there is a Veterans Walk that will start at the Memorial Building downtown Visalia on Center Street and check in as early as eight. They're not going to take off till nine o'clock. And then walk out down to the World War II Memorial Wall there on South Mulley Boulevard, actually in front of one of our agencies. And then I'd like to take the last little bit of my time, Mr. Chair, if I could, to ask our newest Board Representative Samantha Ferrero to come up and introduce herself, please.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning to the Board and to Mr. CAO. My name is Samantha Ferrero. I'm a new Board Representative for the Board of Supervisors. I'm a resident of Visalia. I was born and raised here. Went to school in San Diego but came back to begin my career. I previously was with Visalia Police Department as the Crime Prevention Coordinator where I coordinated our community outreach efforts for the residents of Visalia. I'm excited to broaden my horizons a little bit with the county and to be of service to the residents of Tulare County. So thank you, Board, for this opportunity. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. Welcome, Samantha. Okay, thank you Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Wordley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I thought we did have good meetings in Washington DC. We had nice weather too, for a change. Sometimes we haven't had such good weather back there, but it was nice for walking purposes. I stayed one day after the Board came back with the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board. Our Executive Officer testified before a subcommittee on a bill that has been introduced. And I would like to just say a couple of words about this. First, I want to thank Senator McCarthy for being a co-sponsor of the bill. As a majority whip, a lot of times they sort of, that position tend to stay neutral on items, but in this case, he came out in favor of it, which I think will go a long ways towards moving the bill forward. Just to put it in the context of what it means for the San Joaquin Valley, we have improved the air quality in the San Joaquin Valley by over eighty percent in the last twenty years. And oftentimes, people don't recognize that because changing standards of air quality by the federal EPA means that we will find ourselves with more violations, but it doesn't mean that our air quality isn't getting better. So it's a little bit of a conundrum there. But what we're facing now is that most recently, the federal EPA has reduced ozone standards and PM ten, or PM two point five standards. And the district is in a position where they are, it's a very serious situation which affects all of us. And it simply is this. The district will have to put together next year a plan that will show compliance with the new federal standards. We cannot do that. It is impossible for us to do that. There is not the technology, there's not enough money in the world to bring us into compliance. Nonetheless, if we do not submit a plan that will show compliance, we will suffer very serious consequences in the valley. No new businesses would be allowed to move here. Businesses that would hope to expand here would have to buy tremendous amount of offsets to be able to do anything. It would basically kill economic development in the San Joaquin Valley. In addition, we would lose our federal highway funding, about two point five billion dollars a year in the San Joaquin Valley. And the power of the air district would be transferred to the federal EPA. So the bill is designed to give more time to try to come into compliance so that we don't start the sanction clock. So it's a very, very serious matter. And there were four speakers who spoke on behalf of the bill that were experts in the field. And they had a very receptive group of congressmen there at the hearing. Although I will tell you, you have to beware of people who make generic statements such as, "Well, we can't roll back the air standards." This bill does not roll back the air standards. The air standards stay completely in place and only extends the time to try to seek compliance. So anyway, I just wanted to pass that on. So I stuck around for that and with the air district and then came back. And things are going well here in Tulare County and I'm happy to say that I'm not aware of any emergency matters before the county or the Board. So that's all I have for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Sheeta.
I also attended the trip to Washington DC. It was probably the best weather we've ever had in the twelve years I've been going. This is my, was my last trip with the Board to Washington DC. This past Saturday, we had the Orange Blossom Parade in Lindsay and I had the pleasure of riding with George Lowry who owns a Cobra. So we rode a Cobra down through the parade and I don't think anybody ever saw me or George. All they saw was the car. But it was a great event. We had a lot of entries and it was a very long parade and it was very successful. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you. I always keep tab on Lake Success and this morning I pulled it up on my computer and Lake Success has forty-three thousand five hundred acre feet of water in it. Now, if you figure last year we had eight thousand total, that's five times the water already. So that's going to help our groundwater and it's going to help us in the future. And when we were in Washington DC, we met with the Corps and, of course, Congressman McCarthy and Paolo Lombardi working through there got some wording into the appropriations coming for, and possibly we're going to get money to fund the, not only the widening in the spillway, but also the enlargement of the pool going from eighty-two five up to one hundred and ten thousand acre feet. So that was good news. I mean, we've been fighting this thing ever since two thousand and three, trying to break this, bring Success Day on back, get a DSAC four rating on it so we can move forward with the pool enlargement. So our, the fruits of our labor are starting to come out. We hammered this thing every year when we went to Washington DC, Sacramento. It's been a, it's been a long ordeal, but I think we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel now. Tomorrow, I've got jury duty, so I'm going to cross my fingers and hope when I make that little phone call tonight that they say it's been canceled or something. But I did get off last time because it was on Board Day and I said, "I don't go to jury duty on Board Day." So anyway.
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, as you made that comment, I pulled up the reservoir at Pine Flat, which of course holds a million acre feet. And as of today, it has four hundred and sixty-four thousand acre feet behind it and the river is running at forty-two hundred cubic feet per second. And the alt irrigation reported to this morning was that they would expect to start their ditch run probably around the twelfth of May and run through August. And so those are the kind of things which are very helpful as we work going forward.
Surface water with the groundwater.
Surface water delivery, which helps our groundwater significantly.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to mention another lake and how full it was. I'm kidding. I'm not going to keep going with your doing what you're doing. But one thing I did forget to mention was that I have a lot of different communities in District Two. This Saturday, we'll be participating in various community cleanup events as a celebration of Earth Day. I think it's awesome that residents in these unincorporated communities take pride in their communities and really put forth a great effort to encourage residents to clean up their properties and clean up common areas of their towns. And I appreciate our haulers for working with the communities and donating bins for disposal and also county landfill staff for working with them on the disposal fees. I think it's a great, great effort.
Okay, thank you. Thursday, I have the Ag Luncheon in Porterville, which is always an event, getting with all the farmers and the different businesses. Thursday night, we'll have our Sales Committee meeting for Porterville Fair, which my wife and I chair to sell all the animals every year and we'll be mailing out the buyers' numbers to everybody getting ready for the fair. Saturday night, I'll be going to Fresno. My granddaughter Emily got the Star Farmer Award from over around the King City area, regional award, and now she's going for one of the state awards and her class is entrepreneur. So actually using her animals as a business and actually making money to pay for her different projects has paid off. So hopefully, she'll, she'll get that award for the deal. And talking about the air again, I've always put this up and I've always told them, "Why don't we just go down to Maricopa and we'll dig a gigantic valley right through there out to the ocean and all that bad air can be pushed out. We'll get the marine air in, we can raise wine grapes in the Bakersfield area and that would cure all of our problems. Plus, we can use the aggregate. In fact, maybe the, maybe the government would go for that. If you use that, the aggregate to build a high-speed rail, so.
The tunnels.
Yeah. So anyway, that's my take on that. But that's all I have this morning, so thank you. Now we go to item number two, present a proclamation proclaiming April nineteenth, two sixteen, as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. So Darla, is going to do our presentation?
Good morning, Chairman NSN, the Board. I am very happy to be here today to introduce Betty Morehead, who was our Chair for our Library Advisory Board last year for to-do our annual Library Advisory Board report. It's been a real pleasure working with my Board and it's growing and I'm very happy for the support of the Board. And I just want them to be able to tell you what we've been doing and how they've been helping us. So let me introduce you again to Betty Morehead.
Good morning.
Morning, welcome.
It's exciting to be here to talk with you about the library and jewel for Tulare County. And so as the Library Advisory Board, I'm going to go through some of the things that we do. And this is just a preview of some of the things we're going to talk about this morning. And I'm just going to go through the slides and I'm not going to read them to you, but just give you some highlights of those and you'll be receiving, you have a copy of them. So we'll go ahead and go. So the Library Advisory Board was created for you, to serve you, and it was created by you. And so as we were preparing this, you know, we have Advisory Board bylaws, but it was also nice to note that, I wasn't even sure exactly when it was created, so it was nice to find that it was in nineteen eighty. So that's a lot of years of service and I hope that we've been a benefit to you as an Advisory Board. The, the mission of the library is very clear and it is about enriching lives. It's adding to life. And I think one of the important things of our library is it's a service-oriented library. And that is just where it is because people need to come and learn about the library. So we have to be in that mindset and I think that's really important. And our library staff is very well-trained and to how to help be resources. And sometimes you have to go outside the box to find what it is someone's needing or even just to talk with them a little further to clarify. And our staff is very committed and does a really good job with that. Our core services are, I love this slide because we purposely highlighted all the action verbs that we are, we provide access, we provide customer service. We're providing services to a broad spectrum of people. We have adult literacy services and it's about enrichment. It's about adding to the quality of life. And for some people, it's, you know, you'll see later, we're partnering with literacy programs and these are adults learning to read. And those are, those are essential quality of life issues. And for the library to be involved with that, I think is the perfect match to have our literacy programs and our county library system because we really can spread through the entire county and find those pockets. Because there are pockets of poverty and that's typically where those isolations become and they don't have access to liberty, literacy. So we're really doing a great job with that. And then our membership for the Advisory Board, there's one member selected that comes from each Supervisor District and then there are five at-large members. We currently have a vacancy in District Five, two of our large districts, and we have a new member that's getting ready to come on board from District Four. And this has been, I've been with, I can't remember exactly when I started with the Advisory Board, but I've been with the library for years, even before I was on the Board. And the diversity of this Board is where its effectiveness comes. And there's a lot of diversity in our professional backgrounds. Some of us grew up in Tulare County, grew up going to the libraries. Some of us are new to the county. But we're all committed to finding, to ensure that our county library services are the best they can be and reach the greatest population that we can find. We meet the second Tuesday of every month at two o'clock. We typically meet in the upstairs conference room at the Visalia branch. But a couple of years ago, the Advisory Board said, "We need to go see the libraries." And so it's a little bit of a challenge for us, but we've already been to quite a few of the branches. I think maybe almost halfway through and then we'll just start again. But with adding London, you know, we'll, we have more places to go. But, and that's been good. So we've taken our meetings to just sit in the midst of that branch for an hour. And the branch is usually open when we're there and so we're, try to be quiet. But libraries aren't as quiet as they used to be, so they're very interactive. But I'm just thankful for our Board and it's nice to see us build up. A lot of accomplishments that we have done and again, you're going to see key words, renovations, partnerships, expanding reading collections. There was a wonderful display of women in Tulare County and these are women pioneers that have made a difference in the development of Tulare County. We've brought in authors events so that people can actually, if you're interested in writing, talk to someone that does it. We've had grants, our teens have been involved with doing this Veterans History Project. We've got a heritage project. We have a new librarian. We have a new librarian in the extra branch which we were just at. And just in also having the diversity, like a grant about stretching the food dollars comes through the library because we're there as an information service. So that's really important. And one of the reasons you do have a printed copy, there's just a lot of facts and figures that associate with the library. Some of them have to do with the number of books, the number of people. But a lot of it just shows the diversity of, today's library is very different. And it's very exciting and so we have, you know, we have online things. We have computers. There's eBooks, there's audiobooks. There's, I know people that check them out because they're always on the road driving. And so while they're driving, they're listening to a book. And that's just a wonderful way for our library to be. So as a Board, our goals are, have been to fill current membership vacancies and to schedule monthly meetings at branches outside of Visalia. And then we're constantly reviewing the county policies, rules, and guidelines for the, all of the branches in general. And we're actually in the process of doing some of that review right now. And that's really important because we see how complicated it is to meet the letter of the law, have open access, you know, and it's really a challenging thing. And we're going to be getting ready to set our new goals. And a conversation at our last meeting, I think is, you know, giving us a little peek of, there's a lot of passion and one of the passions that's kind of beginning to come out is our underserved populations, you know, and that may require some unique resource. you know, and that may require some unique resources or approaches to that.
Let's do this again.
Okay. So for things that are going on, we have a new online language learning tool, we've got new collections, we're in the process of building London, working with Farmersville on that, Pixley's Community Center, it's just about done, that the library's going to relocate to from the school, so that one's a relocation. We're working on improving the safety and security of the library, one, a safe place for users to be, but also securing our resources there. We work with the Tulare Visea Adult Schools and have partnerships with them. There was just a great summer reading program, Every Hero Has a Story, and kids dressed up as their heroes, and again, diversity of the library, a summer lunch program was one with the library. If you're where people can come, and we need to get, you know, basic needs, and one of them is food, you know, we can be a player. We're doing a virtual authors' events, where people can come in, and it's through electronically that that's happening. And then a key, essential part of the library is building on our base funding that we get from the county, and we do that through grants, special programs, some of them are through library, state, and federal opportunities, but we also do, you know, work with nonprofits, we work with businesses, anywhere that we can find a matching, you know, support service, if we can match some money, or a lot of times outright get a grant, this is how we build and expand. And the Library Advisory Board really supports all these things, and sometimes in the realm of our professional life, or where we are with our personal life, we can even bring in resources that we're aware of, because maybe we're working with them in another organization. And then purchasing of a 3D printer, we live in a technology world, we have to be cutting edge, because that's what keeps us viable, and it makes us attractive for people to come in and use our resources. So our acknowledgements, the Tulare County Library staff are great, they're well-trained, they work hard, they're overwhelmed. Mike Drake is the Deputy County Librarian, he's filled in in some of the interim gaps of transition of leadership. Darla is a tremendous asset, the Library Board has grown, she's helped, she's already helping us fill some of our vacancies, she's contributed a lot, she's innovative. And we have the Friends of Tulare County Library in Three Rivers, Lindsay, Exter, and Dinuba. And there's a lot of interest, I know, in our area in South County, of developing the Friends of the Library, and we may actually link ourselves, because some of our branches are so small, but to just have a local focus and input on that. And so I think as an Advisory Board, we may see ourselves moving towards that. And just a lot of community groups and support agencies, we have a lot of partnerships throughout our county, and some of them are just community interest organizations, and some of them are, you know, agencies that we can partner with, and the literacy programs, different school districts and stuff. And one of the things I really wanted to highlight, just to, in regards to our librarian, is she was recently selected for a program called Collective Wisdom, which is libraries, museums, and archive, people working together. It was a highly competitive application, and she shared with us at our last advisory meeting that she was selected for this, and it is wonderful, because she gets to go to some conferences, and they're paying for all this, but all that information she gets comes back to us. And she's already shown a lot of innovation, and I think this is just going to build upon it, so as an Advisory Board, we're very excited, we think you've made a wonderful selection in your librarian. And, you know, and foremost, we do appreciate the Board of Supervisors. You're our funding source, I know it's budget season, you know, and we're thinking, we're in a moving mode, and so we want you to get on board with us. And, but, thank you for your time, and thank you so much for the support of libraries in Tulare County.
I also want to thank the Board members who came today. If you could please stand.
Okay, the next person I want to introduce is Sue Gillison, she's our Library Literacy Coordinator, manager, extraordinaire. I really appreciate Sue, she's been just a great help to me, and I like to brag about the fact that I went to a literacy conference last year, and I sat in that conference and learned a lot of things, but I also taught a lot of things that I learned from Sue, because she was so good at teaching me about what we do here, and we do amazing things, so let me turn that over to Sue.
Good morning, I have a fun job, and I want to show you why I have a fun job. I get to work with the people that provide this literacy service. We have a tiny little staff, we love what we do. At our end, it's myself, Wyn Doyle, and Sharon Sanderson, who are here, my dynamo in Tulare, Kim Torres, and her coworker Connie Rhodes. We have lots of new things that have happened this year, and I'm going to tell you about them in about 30 seconds, so I can introduce some people to you. We saw some numbers up there, our numbers are changing constantly, when people say, how many people do you have coming in for tutoring? And we say, well, what time is it? We'll see. We far exceeded what was going on last year, because we really had an uptick in our numbers of volunteers who have stepped forward in Tulare County. Tulare County has an amazing show of force when it comes to volunteers, and I know that all of you know that, so we've been able to serve a lot more people, and when we get to the end of the fiscal year, I'll be able to do some calculations, and you're here chortling from the literacy office. So our numbers of students have gone up quite a bit, we have a lot more service that we're providing for ESL students, we have students we're working with whose first languages are Spanish, Arabic, Urdu, Lao, Mandarin, could go on and on. We're working with many people as they prepare to become U.S. citizens, that's one of the most enjoyable and satisfying things that we do, and one of our students that's here today has just recently become a citizen. We're continuing our work on GED preparation, other standardized tests where people do not have another place to go, or another model is not a good fit for them. We have three conversation circles going on, two of them, one of them is brand-new this year, and this came out of a wonderful partnership with SelfHelp Enterprises, and there are several people from SelfHelp here today that we want to recognize, go ahead and stand up. Chris Jensen works for SelfHelp, she is also a trained ESL instructor, and she says, can I come teach a class? Well, yes, you can. So she is. Thank you. So they provide a site, they're in Goshen, that is a very underserved area, we bring the expertise in the form of Chris, they bring the facilities, it's a good match. In Tulare, transforming Tulare is in its second year, this is a wonderful job training program that's going on from Kim Zan, in collaboration with many other community organizations in the city of Tulare, to help our folks who are getting ready to bite into a job hunt. She's also started a phenomenal family literacy program called Mother Read, Father Read, where again, we're trying to connect with our clients that have children, at our end we do that with our parents of very young children, with our elf club and our early literacy trainings. She's hitting some of the folks that are enrolled at the Tulare Adult School, who are parents, and we're trying to ignite that culture of literacy in the family unit, because we know that's where it starts. We have recently become a pilot library for Career Online High School, we're one of 20 in the state of California, that threw our name in the hat, say, yep, let us be a conduit to this new form of an accredited high school option for folks that did not complete high school. So we're experimenting with that, and it's been a very good thing. And we are continuing to be present at the Sequoias Adult Education Consortium, which is a group of educators in our community, from COS to the school districts, to these other ancillary programs such as ourself, that we're all in the business of adult ed. So we're busy as bees, and couldn't be any happier about that. Okay, let's take a moment, if you would, to say hello to our volunteers. I do always ask as many that can come to come, I don't ever want to over-ask, because they give so freely, but I know many of our here today, so if I could ask the volunteers to stand, please. And these are the wonderful folks that come in and do whatever we ask them to do. I'll say, can you do this? And they say, yes. So we appreciate them immensely. Gives me great pleasure to ask two of our students to join me up here, Kalood and Delia, can you join me, please? This is the true fun, when we, here she is. We get to hear from the horse's mouth, as they say. Kalood has been with us for a couple of years, and she embodies what we want in the student.
Pull the microphone down, Sue.
Yep, there we go. No.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kalood Al Farah, I am from Yemen. I came here, I came United States for five years ago, I met Sue for about two years ago, and it was a good program, and I'm glad that I was chosen here today to speak and share with you guys what I have learned. Before I'm coming to this program, my speaking skill wasn't too good, so today, I am still practicing my speaking and learning how to read and write. I like this program, because it, okay, I like this program, because if you need help in anything you want, they help you. For example, when I registered for my, to get my citizenship, I came and asked the program if they can help me learn the questions for this citizen. Everyone there at this program helped me reach my goal and getting my citizenship. I'd like to thank everyone here at this program who have encouraged me to learn. It is really an amazing program and a great experience. At the end, I'd like also to thank my teacher Debbie, who has taught me and helped me learn everything. I want to, they helped me to learn everything. Thank you for everyone in this program, thank you for you guys still singing to me.
Delia is a member of our new group in Goshen, and this has been a remarkable thing to watch. Chris came in like a whirlwind of expertise and enthusiasm, and collected close to 20 folks who have taken full advantage of this amazing gift, and it's something that warms our hearts. So she is taking part in the three-day-a-week English class in Goshen, so why don't you tell us a little something?
Good morning. My name is Delia Gutierrez, I am here representing my classmates of English class from Goshen. Thanks to SelfHelp Enterprises, the Literacy Center, and our teacher, Kristelle Jensen, seeing the need we have in our community, made this program possible. For us, it's very important to learn the language, because it allows us to communicate with our children, be part of their school activities, and participate in our community and helping others. Having access to this program has changed and impacted our lives in a positive way. We are learning to be independent in a society where it could be difficult to adapt. Each one of us have dreams, goals, and stories to share. Thanks to the Literacy Center, that is association with SelfHelp Enterprises, providing materials and the building, where we learn that it's never too late to pursue our dreams. On behalf of my classmates and the community of Goshen, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support, we appreciate it.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just to make a couple of quick comments, maybe, before you present the proclamation, if that would be okay?
Okay.
I just want to say, wow, that was a fantastic presentation, and really look forward to it every year, because you keep bringing new learners each year, and we are able to see just how far these individuals have come, and, you know, one word really came to mind when they were speaking, and that is empowerment. You know, I look at what all the volunteers do, and what all the staff of the library does, and you're empowering individuals to take full advantage of your services, and to change their lives, and to make a difference in their community, and affect generations that will come after them, and I think it's just really an incredible feeling, and how rewarding for all of you volunteers and for the staff, just to know the impact that you're having, and us as a Board, I feel great helping to make this possible, and furthering the literacy services that are offered in this county, because of the tremendous impact that it has on people. And so my kudos to you, and thank you to the Library Advisory Board, staff, and volunteers for all that you do, because you're having a tremendous impact, and really doing a wonderful job. Thanks.
Just a real quick comment, you know, there are things that warm your heart as a supervisor, and a couple of them are for me, the foster-child adoption, and then this program of teaching literacy to people, and so I just want to say my thanks to the volunteers, because as a staff and as a county, we help to facilitate this program, but it's the volunteers who make it happen. And I'm reminded that what we do here as a county government, really is affect people. And we often get caught up in buildings, and construction, and programs, and taxes, and budgets, and all that sort of thing, but at the end of the day, it's how we affect people that really is important. And so it's great, I love it when the library folks come and bring their people here, and we get a chance, not only to hear from some people who have succeeded in our learning in this process, coming from, I'm sure, both instances, these are folks who probably didn't speak a word of English when they came here, whether it was from Mexico or it was from Yemen, and now to be able to do what they're able to do is just truly, truly remarkable. The last thing I wanted to mention was that the Library for London project, of course, is moving along, the building is in place, construction is moving along very well, and I wanted to remind our librarian, I have this dog-eared card I've been carrying around in my wallet for about two years, and it's from Greg Lucas, who's a state librarian. When I was up at a CSAC conference, I'm sure it was two years ago now, I told him about what we were doing in London. He was so excited, he said, I want to know when you have your grand opening, and Darla, this can't happen in three days, right? We have to have a lot of advance notice. When we know when we're going to have a grand opening, if at all possible, the state librarian would like to be at that opening, and we want to be sure, to extend an invitation to him. Again, my thanks to all the people who are making it all happen. Thank you.
I want to congratulate the two who came up and made their statements. So difficult to not only learn a new language, but to stand up in front of so many people, you both did very, very well. Congratulations.
My grandparents never learned to speak English, and because of your literacy program, not only your people you help learn how to speak English, but they learn how to read English. And I think it's a real disadvantage for people who do not speak the English language in this country, to really appreciate all that this country has to offer. So I want to thank you very much for your literacy program. It probably would have been helpful if it existed 80 years ago. But I can see every year how many lives that you touch, and it's probably one of the more rewarding programs that we have in Tulare County, so thank you.
Thank you. And I don't think Alan ever learned how to speak Japanese.
And I don't think Alan ever learned how to speak Japanese, did you?
That's right.
But if you need someone to teach oki, we have a, we have an expert over here.
I wrote the book. I wrote the book. Darla, Betty, Sue, you want to join me down here for the proclamation?
Come on inside. If you'd like to bring up food, you can...
Sure.
We have a student.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, come on in. Yeah. Yeah, come on in the, we call this the well. Come in and join us. Thank you.
I don't know.
Can we ask our tutors to join us?
Sure. Bring everybody up.
Can we have the tutors join us, too, please?
Add our staff that's here.
Yeah, bring everybody up.
All tutors.
Yeah, get up here. We're proud of you guys.
We do this together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to fill the well up with this group.
Some of the fruits of your labor of being able to get acknowledged.
Can I move up and come in?
And Delia? You can come in. We got a little weather. She's right here.
Good.
You're going to have to back up some more, create some more space.
Come on in here. We're all friendly. Okay. Yeah, you guys can come on up around me, yeah. Okay, we're presenting a proclamation, uh, April 19th, 2016, as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County. Tulare County Libraries transform our communities by providing learning for all the digital age, for all, and the digital age, let me tell you, I'm lost. I'm lost. I can operate my cellphone, that's about my, uh, information, education, and access. In Tulare County Public Libraries Read to Success Library Literacy Program, partnering with our literacy programs, celebrates 16 years of literacy service to adults transforming their lives in Tulare County. Local volunteers with sincere interest in our community service and the desire to assist other adults tutor learners and read and enhance their reading and life skills. The prop, the people from the area of Tulare County, both urban and rural, form an enthusiastic group of learners. The Library Literacy Program shows that one-on-one tutoring makes a real difference in the overall success of adults who are learning to read. And Tulare County Library Read to Succeed Program partners with numerous Tulare County and community agencies to ensure the leverage of resources and services. The Tulare County Public Library receives support and funds from California State Library, Tulare County Health and Human Services, contributions from the numerous community groups and agencies to assure continued service that assists the community's efforts to address the literacy needs of adults in Tulare County. Tulare County is pleased with the success of the Library Literacy Program for adults within Tulare County and commends the publicly, publicly acknowledges the efforts of the program's staff, volunteers, tutors, learners, in their future endeavors. So now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, as Library Literacy Day in Tulare County, and we encourage all residents to visit their library to take advantage of the wonderful services, to see, uh, how our libraries have transformed. So, this is signed by Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpool, Philip Cox, Stephen Wordley, and yours truly, Mike Ennis. So, congratulations. Thank you for all your efforts, and keep up the good work, and the board is 100% behind you. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go this way. One, two, three. Kyle?
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. So much. Here you go. Darla, thank you. Good program. We think we made a good decision, and Darla, ourselves, the board does, because we had a lot of people vying for that job. Thank you.
Hey, but I have to go tutor.
Okay. Keep up the good work.
Mr. Chair, I do know this is an action item, and I would gladly move for approval.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Vanderpool. Seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Vote is unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. Great program. Okay, let's move on to item number three. Presentation given by the 2015 Leadership Class on Volunteers' Project and Recognition of Class Members. Sorry about that. Should have turned that back around.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, C.A. of Spada, and Council Dale Slane. I'm Rhonda Shustrom, Human Resources Director, and today I am very proud to be able to bring to you the 2015 Leadership Class, who will be making their presentation, um, which has become tradition after their workshops, six months of workshops, and their service project. We generally come back to the board, they present their findings, and then they graduate from the course today, or from the class in Academy today. I'd like to be able to recognize the individual members of the class, and as I call their name, if they would stand. Dana Allen, Carmina Camacho, Stacy Chastain, Rayan Dworke, Jessica Dunn, Sung Kwan, Stephen Leahy, Yacenia Limas, Sergeant Harold Lyles, Sergeant Jerry Mayberry, Rainbow Park Moore, Tammy Peckham, Greg Powers, Alfredo Reynoso Harrow, Kevin Riggi, Battalion Chief Kevin Riggi from FIRE, Tara Webly Freitas, and Jan Winslow. As you will hear the presentation, um, this year on their project, this class, uh, came up with their task and their goals, and they really took it to heart as a team and as individuals. Many of them volunteered together, and many of them, some of them, took on leadership roles and took on activities with other volunteers. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Stacy Chastain to begin the presentation.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board, Mr. Spada and Ms. Slane. My name's Stacy Chastain, and I am the co-chair of our Leadership Academy for 2015. I'm really excited to be here to, um, just kind of give you guys an overview of our experience during the academy and the impact that we had during our project. I'm really excited to be able to be here today following the great presentation by the library, um, because I think that they just prove our point that volunteerism is relied upon in this community, and so we're just really excited to share the results of our project with you. You'll see in our presentation as well, we picked a tree to represent the storyboard that we're going to share with you, and it serves a few different purposes. But I want to point out, too, that Chairman Ennis during our recognition breakfast spoke about the tree and how it represents life, leadership, and community. And so, I'd like you guys to keep that in mind as we kind of move through the different So in the beginning, our leadership class was formed in April of 2015. We had about 20 members representing nine different departments with the county. The departments represented were the Fire Department, Sheriff's Department, Health and Human Services Agency, Public Defender's Office, IT, Auditor's Office, RMA, Probation, and County Council. Our group was tasked to develop a project at the end of our six-month instructional period, and as we continued to move through each month, um, meeting different individuals throughout the county, learning about hot topics, we started to reflect on past projects and then begin to develop our own idea of what it was that we really wanted to do. As a team, we created a mission statement, and our mission statement for our academy was committed to the highest standards of excellence and innovation in serving Tulare County employees. We value collaboration, volunteerism, and teamwork. It was really important for us, we thought, as a group, to come up with this mission statement before we could even develop a project to better understand what it was that we really wanted to do. So, the idea started to develop. We knew as a team and agreed that we needed to do a project that would add value to the community, foster collaborative relationships with partners, and encourage leadership within county employees. After much deliberation and talking and working things out, we came to the conclusion and the idea of the hashtag TC Volunteers Challenge, which was a countywide volunteer effort. The goals that we wanted to develop in short term was to connect county employees with the community, but the long-term goals was that we wanted to have volunteers to provide healthy contributions that would be something on a sustainable level. We implemented the three-month volunteer, volunteer challenge, which kicked off in October 2015, and it ended at the end of the year. It was a community outreach and implementation of volunteer opportunities database, which was shared with all of the different county employees. We reached out to various community nonprofits. We created a survey mechanism where they could share with us the different opportunities that they were seeking, maybe what some of the requirements were. That way, we kind of made it a little bit easier for people to connect with the nonprofits and opportunities out there. We shared a lot of different messaging and through our different media platforms. Um, we used Twitter, Facebook, LinkedIn, including internal grapevine newsletters, uh, presentations to various departments and that sort of thing, just so we were making sure that there was an awareness about the project that we were wanting to do. Um, and most importantly, we really made an effort to go out and motivate and encourage staff participation. I'm going to go ahead and hand it over now to Jan Winslow, my co-chair on the project. She's going to discuss with you guys some of the outcomes from our project.
Good morning again. So this slide is really an impactful slide for us as a leadership class. Um, you can see here that we had 155 Tulare County employees that participated. Collectively, they did 5,691 volunteer hours, which is nearly 2.75 years of work. That's pretty impressive in a three-month, uh, challenge, and 21 of the 26 county departments represented. So we were very thrilled with that breakdown and that contribution. We knew that the project needed to get started right away. We wanted to take advantage of the October, November, and December activities within the county, so our implementation of the program needed to be swift and to be exact, on point of what we wanted to focus on. And that ended up being the case because in October, nearly 2,200 hours were recorded just in that month alone. November saw more than 1,700, and as did December. So on department participation, again, 21 of the 26 departments participated, and what's impressive about that even more is that 13 departments volunteered 100 or more hours, and, um, eight of those also had 200 or more. So what were the top five cause areas that Tulare County employees focused on? We did an initial pre-survey and we did a post-survey. And between the initial and the post, these are pretty compatible. The initial and the post both said children and youth are the top priority for volunteers in Tulare County. Second, again, in the initial and the final survey, community was second. Animals was third in the initial survey. Faith-based was third, um, here. Seniors was present in both surveys, and hunger appeared in the final survey. So we're going to be looking at the post-challenge results, and in that, we asked a variety of questions. I think we had about 30 questions that we, uh, asked Tulare County employees to participate in. And we asked them, "Did you have a different outlook or appreciation on volunteerism after participating in the challenge?" And 62% said yes. Did volunteerism increase, decrease, or remain the same for you? And 42% said it increased. Was the challenge, did it encourage you or motivate you to volunteer? Our, our guise in that was to find out if we had first-time volunteers or not, or if there was repeated, repeated people volunteering. And 61%, yes, it said it did encourage them, to encourage them to, or motivate them to volunteer. And what's the most impressive number for us is the very last statistic, that 95% planned to continue to volunteer even after the challenge. So one of the questions that we looked at and we knew was going to be very important to us, that we were not going to be able to capture everybody who volunteered. Sometimes it's a private matter, sometimes people don't believe it needs to be personally recognized, but the same token, we know that government needs to be out and present and show its positive side to the communities because people just don't know. They hear perhaps more of the negative side than they do the positive side. And so, we asked that question. Is it important to share our volunteer efforts with the community? And the answer was yes. 86% believe that it is important for us to share out. So what were the top two reasons for participating in the challenge? Pretty simple, make a difference and help people. I also like to point out, um, that we had three other top parts in that challenge response as well. 45% says it's important to connect to the community, 45% is, is a personal philosophy to participate and volunteer, and 42%, yes, I want to be the model, I want to be the example. And part of this, again, was not only for Tulare County employees to be models to each other and to work out with community partners, but most importantly, how are we being models and mentors for our young adults and children in Tulare County? Gathering all this information, um, we were fortunate to host a breakfast recognition for our top volunteers. And just a little, um, tidbit information as we break down, we did have 10 employees who volunteered 120 or more hours. Uh, two employees logged 400 or more in the three-month challenge, and four logged 200 or more, just to give you an idea of the wide amount of volunteer hours that were recorded. 42 employees posted 40 or more hours. A special note in that regards is that in the initial pledge, we had 10 individuals who said they were going to at least pledge 100 or more hours, and four of them exceeded that. And I just want to recognize those individuals who exceeded their pledge hours. Roland Solstice with the Public Defender's Office, Greg Gomez with Information Technology, Supervisor Cox, and Denise England with T-SAG. So I appreciate those who exceeded their initial pledged hours. Also, a special note is this, is to note the average amount of hours collectively when you put everybody together. So that, and average, the employee averaged 36.7 hours of volunteer service. In looking at the teams that participated, we had four teams that came together. All the teams recorded 70 or more hours in the three-month challenge. Um, the top team in total hours was HHSA, Human Services Leadership. They recorded just over 211 hours. Um, HHSA overall, in total hours, recorded almost 2,400, and T-SAG was the top department in participation where they had 60% of their employees participate in the challenge. Also, a special note, referring back to the departments, we had four departments that at least had a 15% percentage, um, rate. T-SAG led everybody with 60%, HRND at 38, Board of Supervisors with 29%, and County Council with 15. So we're very, very, very happy with the results. Rainbow Moore, our, my leadership class, uh, member, will discuss some opportunities and recommendations further, but we're very thrilled with this small sample, and we hope that this will be some type of platform to utilize in the future. Thank you.
So when we were, uh, starting this volunteer challenge project, we wanted something that doesn't really just stop in one year like, uh, other projects. We wanted something long-lasting, something of a legacy, something sustainable. That's why we have spent a lot of time identifying future opportunities and directions possibly. So we would like to share some of the opportunities we identified. First and foremost, 95% desired this to... First and foremost, 95% desired this to continue because they already made the connections with the, and build the relationships with the volunteer organizations and communities. And that is a very significant number, and of course, we would like to building upon momentum. And the more effective way of distributing volunteer needs, meaning that we have had the database that was updated weekly that identified about 50 volunteer opportunities, but we have over 1,900 nonprofits in the community. And a lot of people actually didn't know where it was housed at. It was at the HRD website and HHSA.net, so we may need to branch out some better ways to get the word out. And another thing was maybe new ways of collecting participant hours. Although it's a three-month-long challenge, I saw that some people only logged in one month. I know they didn't just stop volunteering. Something in the busy lives, they stopped logging in the hours, and maybe some difficulties. So, some people just don't even have an internet access. And Survey Monkey was the base we used, and it's not as user-friendly because you can go back and change things. So, possibly paper logging-in options or some other database. And maybe maintaining resources list for the all-year-round, and some sort of a platform for acknowledging the volunteerism all-year-round, such as maybe newsletter, maybe periodic updates on the grapevine, something in that sort. And capturing all participants. Some people just don't feel that I don't need to be advertising that we did encounter some of those, and maybe, like I said, some people really didn't have internet access or so that kind of a problem we have encountered, opportunities. And as we reflect on all this, there are five takeaways that we used from the leadership model, Kudzas and Posner, and that is, we modeled a way by community engagement, and we inspired the vision. As you can see, that rather than starting fresh, reinventing the wheels, we have built upon the previous leadership project, and our tree ties in those first and second leadership And of course, we, the new generation, we had to experiment and took a risk, because that's the only way you're going to grow. And one of the top models, leadership models, we adopted, the values was innovation. So, we used a lot of social media platforms and other marketing tools to get the word out, and that has been proven successful. And we fostered collaboration and strength others, trying to create the ripple effect. It started out encouraging the county, existing county employees, and it actually moved on to involving their friends and families and other community members. And one of the, actually, the speakers that spoke at the award breakfast was Brian Stillwater. He's the Director of the Community Development with the Visalia Rescue Mission. So, we did make a lot of connections with other community leaders in the area, creating the long-lasting ripple effect we were looking for. And of course, we celebrated our victories and values, and this was a true team effort, and I'm going to really miss working with these wonderful people. And finally, we thought about bringing you a binder of our formal proposal, but they said that's not necessary. So, rather than doing that, these are our, just summarizing what we already touched on. So, these are our recommendations to the board, possible all-year-round resource, and offering employees some kind of a recognition, and just hopefully continues by, through other platforms or the existing platforms we have identified. And with this, can I take any, is there any questions that we can answer?
No questions, but what a great program.
Thank you.
Good idea, bringing up this volunteers, because that makes many of our programs in our communities work. If we didn't have volunteers, it wouldn't work. For example, Forterville Fair, it's all volunteers. That fair's been here for years, I think 75 years. And without the volunteers, the only person to get paid is the fair manager and a maintenance person. Rest of the show is done by volunteers. So, great program, great program. I think bringing that to light is very good, and you guys did an excellent job of, and like you say, maybe we need to do this every year, and you guys can say, hey, we started this program, but I think it's a good program to let people know what our communities, we're doing in our communities.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
One of the last recommendations, Rich, around Tulare County by showcasing and delivering positive impacts, that was actually one of the first ideas behind starting that newsletter, and I'm hopeful now that we have a full staff that we can revive around Tulare County, again, and make that a monthly offering, because that was the original idea, was to showcase what individuals in the county were doing. So, I'm excited about that, and that is something that we'll be moving forward.
Yeah, I just want to, first of all, congratulate the leadership Tulare, or the leadership county class. Did a wonderful job. What a great project to have your fingerprints all over. I sure appreciate all of the effort that you put into it. I agree with what Supervisor Cox was mentioning regarding the revitalization of the Around Tulare County newsletter. One of the things that this program really did was it started with the class, and it spread volunteerism within the rest of the county family and friends, family, et cetera. I also think that if we're able to highlight volunteerism in the Around Tulare County newsletter, and then begin distributing that newsletter beyond just the county family to some of our unincorporated communities, so that they know, our unincorporated communities, interested residents, so that they know what the county is doing, resources that are available, hopefully we can encourage volunteerism to spread even further and even have more of an impact. So, I would think we would take it to that level and really see benefits from doing so.
I took advantage of looking up the term volunteerism in the dictionary, and I found this one very, very interesting. "The principle or practice of supporting churches, schools, hospitals, et cetera, by voluntary contributions or aid instead of relying on government assistance." Last week, as we were in Washington, D.C., Supervisor Ashid and I attended a breakfast that was put on by Senator Feinstein. One of the things that caught our attention, there were several different posters up front. One of them were three posters that had the federal budget over the last 20 years. And Alan can correct if I'm wrong, but even in the last 10 years, what was fascinating to me and frightening at the same time was to see that the amount of money that goes to pay the federal debt had gone from 6%, I believe it was, to 13 and 1/2%. Now, think about that, and this is after seven years of, quote, "an expanding economy", so there's more money coming into the federal treasury, and yet, we see our federal debt payment obligation more than doubling. Now, why do I bring this up? The two things that were expanding were federal debt and entitlement programs. What happens when everything else is squeezed? National Defense, all the other programs the federal government does, and you can take that and apply that same concept to what's happening at our state level. Same thing's happening there. We have a situation where more and more money goes to pay debt, unfunded liabilities, everything else gets squeezed. The rediscovery of volunteerism is critical, not only to our county and our communities, but I believe in this country, because we have come to rely upon federal government programs or state programs to being the volunteers, to providing the needs. But our forefathers grew up in a completely different kind of a civilization. No programs, but neighbors helped neighbors. That's what barn raisings were all about. That's when people's homes burnt down and people stepped up and rebuilt their homes. That's what volunteerism is. So, I believe that it's very critical. I really appreciate the leadership class taking this effort to rediscover volunteerism. I realize for many people, volunteerism is not rediscovered, but I think there are many people that it is, and the need for it to continue. Believe me, programs that we are now used to seeing are not going to be able to continue in the future because the funds simply are not going to be there. So, I am fully supportive of the concept of taking this program and doing whatever we can to expand it, creating a culture within our community, within our county government of volunteerism. I know many corporations do the same kind of thing. My son works for Salesforce in San Francisco. They're required to give a certain amount of their time and voluntary efforts, and I'm not saying we require it. I'm just saying it'd be great to build a culture where people have this idea of how we can help one another, because going forward, that's what I'm going to count on. I'm not going to count on the federal government or the state of California. I'm going to look to my neighbors, because those are the folks who can actually, who care and can step up and help. Thank you.
To follow up on the chart we saw at Diane Feinstein's breakfast, as Supervisor Worthy pointed out, there is not enough funds in the next 10 years, and I think the real crash is going to happen within the next 10 years to support all the programs the federal government and the state government have been providing to communities. When I speak in front of, once in a while, in front of awards ceremonies at the Chamber of Commerce in our, the cities in my district, I remind the people, it's not the Board of Supervisors, the state of California, or the federal government to make the communities. It's the people in those chambers or other organizations that are really the heart and soul of the community, and all that is basically volunteer work, and they do it out of the pleasure of knowing that they're helping their fellow human beings. So, I think it's a great program, as Supervisor Ennis pointed out. I'd like to see it continued in the future, and I'm sure that we can build upon it substantially in the next several years. So, thank you.
And I just want to say on behalf of the Leadership Academy, our sincerest thank you and gratefulness to your guys' support throughout this project, and to Rhonda as well, thank you for providing the framework and supporting us. And with that, just thank you very much.
From a staff perspective, I'll be speaking with CEO Spada regarding this program, where it might go in the future. We've got the recommendations from the class. We've heard your suggestions as well. It may be a program that another department may want to take on, or another entity, such as a Chamber of Commerce leadership group. I've already had a discussion with one of the leaders in that class, but we will be taking this into consideration, seeing how we can incorporate this into our county culture in the future, and how we can promote and highlight the volunteerism that our county employees are doing. I would like to ask the class to come forward, along with Chairman Ennis, and take their class graduation photo.
Yeah, come on down.
Where do you, I think in there. They're taking the photo, so however they can do that. Thank you.
Let's do it deeper into the well, so I don't get that. Okay, don't be shy.
Who do you think I can get her ones on?
Hey, everybody look at me. One, two, three. One, two, three, one more. Did everybody get their shots? All right, congratulations.
I think the biggest winners are the last here.
Chair, I think Supervisor Vanderpool photobombed that last picture.
I was smiling, though.
Okay, this doesn't take a vote, does it?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Good. Thanks again for all your efforts. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to approach the board? Okay. You sure can if you want to. On, Mr. Washam.
Good morning, Chairman, Mr. Spada, Ms. Elsling. I just wanted to represent, again, Mike Washam, representing in the Economic Development Office today. Just wanted to extend an invitation to the board and the general public for McDonald's grand opening in Early Mart, will be happening on Saturday, April 30th, at 11 o'clock in the morning. And I just wanted to briefly kind of update the status of that development, the whole development there, just to show what the impact to the community is, the positive impacts, to being business-friendly. And it would just take me two or three minutes to do this. I just wanted to say that Facebook is a Twitter among interest in this right now, and social pun is intended there, because it's alive with photos of the process, the progress in the construction, the highway commercial sign. Some of the comments are, wow, I work in Early Mart, now I have another choice to be able to eat at. Another one says, I'm so proud right now. We started from the bottom, and now here we are. Another one, nice, finally I see improvements from the little town I grew up in. Good job. So, the community, it really, it might mean a small-scale project, but it's large-scale for the community. This is the third project completed in the White River Plaza, so now the 9,000 people that live in the community of Early Mart have the largest aftermarket auto parts retailer, AutoZone. They have the largest, the nation's largest small-box retailer in Dollar General, and now they have the largest, the nation's largest restaurant chain in McDonald's. And the positive impacts that this creates for the county and the community, there are first and foremost, there's an increase in assessed valuation for the tax rolls of the county. There's also an increase in sales tax, and this is maximizing the sales tax revenue for the county. As these projects assist in the reduction of retail leakage to Kern County, because as these residents no longer have to travel outside of the county to purchase these products and services, now they can do it in their own community. It also cuts down on average vehicle traffic as well, so that's all positive. And then finally, job creation. The McDonald's is looking at about 50 jobs total that will be created altogether. We're looking at over 75 jobs out of the three businesses that have been there. And oftentimes, the first job a person might have is as a stepping stone, is, say, a McDonald's job. And in our own office, we have Caterina Serna, is an admin aide who helps in economic development and helps with the water, the bottled water program. When we were at the groundbreaking for the McDonald's, she said, you know, my first job was at McDonald's, and actually, that's the gentleman I worked for, right there. And the franchise owner of this has multiple franchises in Tulare County. So, she actually got her first step in her professional career at McDonald's. So, it's a real big benefit. So, I just wanted to kind of highlight, as the White River Plaza is in about midway through full build-out, and I've And I've been told, working with Max Becerra, the developer, that as soon as the McDonald's is opened up and running, that he's ready to submit plans for the next building and the next process in there. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of a good word. Also, the developer committed a portion of the highway pylon sign. And towards the bottom of it's going to be welcome to Early Mart as part of that. He designed that into the sign as well. So just wanted to give you that good news. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Anybody else wishing to speak to the board during public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And let's take up the consent calendar at this time. Is anybody wishing to pull anything off or anybody from the...
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to pull number 11 for information.
Okay. Item number 11 being pulled for information only. Mr. Hess?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Bales-Lang, John Hess, Deputy CAO, General Services, Capital Projects. So as a quick summary, the project includes three wells, one ag well at Bob Wiley, a domestic well at Bob Wiley, and a well at Moonee Grove. The Moonee Grove well has two side-by-side pumps, one for irrigation, one for domestic. The ag well and the irrigation well are both complete operational in, you know, in production. All of the wells are complete and meet the production demands. The two domestic wells are currently being permitted by the state. So at the completion of that process, they'll be connected to the system, and we expect to bring a notice of completion next month in early May.
Thank you. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for that report. Okay, let's move to item number 24, construction contract for the South County Detention Facility. Your Hess again.
You bet.
Thank you.
The only guy that uses the elevator.
Oh, this is nice.
Yeah.
So again, good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Spada, Ms. Bales-Lang, John Hess, Deputy CAO of General Services and Capital Projects. This morning, I'm going to do a brief presentation regarding the construction contract for the Bernard's Brothers Incorporated for the construction of the South County Detention Facility. So first is an image rendering of the facility, what it'll look like from the street upon completion of construction two years from now. So it has a nice visual appeal there from the street. The presentation this morning will have four short sections. First, a little overview and background of the project. Second, some information regarding the building. Third, a summary of the bids that we received. Then discussion of construction next steps. And finally, the requested actions. So the project consists of the construction of a new jail facility in the city of Porterville. It will, the purpose of the project, the purpose of the facility is to provide essential public safety services in that portion of the county. Currently, our detention facilities are concentrated here in Visalia and to the north. We do not have any in that portion of the county. So this will provide those services in that portion of the county, which in turn will create operational efficiencies within the jail system. Additionally, this project will increase facilitation of services with the State Office Administrator of the Courts, the newly constructed courthouse in Porterville, as it'll reduce inmate transportation, officer time, and so forth. So the funds for this project have been provided by the state of California, as well as Tulare County has a 10% matching requirement. The program is the AB 900 Jail Construction Program. The state is providing $60 million in lease revenue bonds. And our 10% match portion is divided between 3 million in-kind and 3 million cash match. Here's a vicinity map showing, not so well, but it shows to the bottom left, the location of the facility. You can see a yellow pin there in relation to the city of Porterville. And then you can see the Porterville courthouse and its proximity to those facilities. So here's another image rendering of the entire facility, kind of a bird's eye view. You can see the main facility in the center, parking lots, a vehicle sallyport, and a utility building to the back. I'll have a site layout plan here in a moment as well.
Full single story?
It is single story, let me do a little laser here. It is single story on the major portions of the administration side of the building over here, and then it is mezzanine over here for housing purposes. So the project officially began back in December 2011 upon approval of submission of an application for funding by the board. The funds were awarded by the state in April 2012, and the county purchased the property that same year. There have been three major design phases to this project, the first of which was the schematic design process approved by the state in October 2013. The second was the design development process approved early last year in January. And the final one was the construction document process, which was approved earlier this year in January, which allowed us to proceed to bid. So little information regarding the building. It is a full-service detention facility, 510 beds, nine medical segregation beds. It'll be about 100,000 square feet, a little more with the exterior utility plant. And it will have all necessary services on-site, particularly in light of the five additive alternates. It'll have food, laundry, admin, medical, all the things it needs to operate. The design consultant was DLR Group, and the construction management company is Vanner Incorporated. Here's the site layout plan, again showing the main facility in the center, some parking lots, a vehicle sallyport. You see the utility building to the north and a TES tank, a thermal energy storage tank to the very top of the image, and a drainage basin to collect runoff on the left side. This is a schematic kind of architectural view of what the housing units will look like. You can see the security command in the center, able to see all of the four housing units in that one pod. And there's two pods with four housing units each. And so what that does, that increases officer safety and allows for the officers to see the entire housing unit from one location, creating efficiencies within the operations. So the bidding began back in August with the approval of a pre-qualification process. The board also approved the bid documents in October. And then the state issued the authorization to proceed to bid back in February. We immediately went to bid. It was a pretty quick bidding process. We opened bids last month, and today we're considering the approval of the construction This table provides a summary of the project cost estimate and the two bids that we received, both for the base bid as well as all five alternates. So you can see the estimate was 53.3 million for base and all five additive alternates. Bernard's Brothers, who we are recommending for award of a construction contract as the lowest responsive responsible bidder, came in about $875,000 or one and a half, 1.6% under the cost estimate. The other bid came from Hensel Phelps, who was very close to the estimate as well, at 53.6. So we were quite pleased, and we believe these were competitive and favorable bids for the project, allowing us to move into construction. So with that, if the board considers and approves a construction contract this morning, the state pooled money investment board has a scheduled meeting of May 18th to sell the lease revenue bonds. They then give us authority to execute the contract within two days, and we proceed quickly through the necessary items to get to construction. First, issue a notice to proceed. Second, hold a pre-construction conference. And then the contractor begins construction June 1st. It's a two-year project, so it will be completed June 1st, 2018. And there's a groundbreaking scheduled at this time for June 8th, 2016. So that'll be a great kickoff to the project. So there are a wide number of people that have been involved in this project over the years. Been a great project, a major undertaking for a lot of individuals, of course. The board and the CAO have been very supportive of the project as we proceeded. And of course Sheriff Boudreau and his command staff have been integral in the process as well. General Services and Capital Project staff have done a lot of work, a lot of the grunt work to get us to this point. And then of course council, ICT, and RMA have provided critical support throughout the process. Finally, the state of California has been involved very heavily throughout the process. And of course, our project consultant team has given us critical support as well. So with that, the requested action for this morning would be to award a construction contract for the South County Detention Facility to Bernard's Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $52,442,000. Approve that same contract, and then authorize the chairman to sign the contract upon final approval from the state review of insurances and all of the formalities therein. So that, that's the end of the presentation. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, John. Not a question, but I can remember four years ago when we were all standing in front of the substation in Porterville, when at that time Sheriff Whitman made the announcement, and I thought, four years? How come so long? Well, it takes a while. So anyway, great job. I really appreciate all the hard work from all you guys and also appreciate if the bid came in underneath the bid because underneath the, what it was set up to be. Because around us, like John was telling me earlier, these other bids went out and they came in way over budget. And so this could have thrown this thing completely out of kilter. We may have had to go back to the drawing board and start over. So, good news, great news. Any comments, Supervisor Cox?
Two questions, John. General contractor, where are they located, out of, and then are we using local subcontractors on the actual construction?
I'll defer that, both of those questions, Kyle Taylor, our Capital Projects Coordinator, can help with the details on both of those questions. There will be extensive subcontractor work on the project. And so Vanner has predicted that several hundred jobs and will be provided here locally as a result of the purchasing of materials and hiring of subcontractors. So for the location.
Good morning. The contractors out of San Fernando, they have provided an entire list of subcontractors which I can provide to you. There are several that are, that are local, Fresno area. There's not a whole lot that are, that one, that are local to say Porterville. But there are, yes, some, quite a few from the valley.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to see that list. Also, just a quick statement, Mr. Chair, had we not been prepared financially, had we not had our house in order, we would not have been able to apply for these funds, which is the case. Many counties found themselves saying up and down the state. So I think this speaks well of this board's conservative nature to use one-time monies for one-time purchases. So I think we've done well. Thank you, Sean.
I just had a question. Nothing adversarial at all, just I was curious. You know, it seems like on a project this high in dollar amount, you would get more than two responsible bids. Is this pretty common in the jail construction industry to only have a limited number of bids actually qualify?
So a couple of things on that. There was, we did do the pre-qualification process back in August, September, October. There were eight bidders that qualified. There was a 350-point questionnaire for that process, so it was pretty exhaustive. Eight of those bidders did qualify for the process. Of those at the pre-bid meeting, which is required to attend and pull the materials, seven of those bidders showed up at the pre-bid meeting, and so we were expecting higher numbers. What happened is, is many, there were a handful of projects throughout the state and the kind of western states that were bidding at the same time because of the way these financing approvals had worked. They had all kind of unloaded at the same time across the state. So Santa Barbara opened on the same day we did, and a couple of other counties opened on the same day we did. So no two is not desirable, two is not necessarily what we want to see, and we were hoping to see more. But when we saw the bids, as favorable as they were, we were pleased in spite of the two bidders.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Worley?
Yeah, I don't know, I just thought about this, but I suspect this is the largest single construction project probably ever undertaken by the county of Tulare.
I believe that's the case. That's kind of what we've been operating under the assumption that's probably, dollar-wise, it's the biggest thing we've undertaken, certainly in a couple decades.
I mean, the construction of the Bob Wiley Detention Facility, Juvenile Facility, those were big projects, but my recollection, I think the Juvenile Facility was like a $15 million project. And of course, part of that's inflation and the cost of construction. But nonetheless, it is very impressive. And to follow up on what Supervisor Cox said, not only does the fiscal health of the county define matching funds, and I know there were other counties that actually qualified for and returned funds back to the state of California because they couldn't meet those matching requirements, but even bigger than construction is operations. And we know that's going to be a challenge. You can build something, you can find the funding to build it, but then you have to staff it. And staffing it's going to be a challenge for us. But there again, if you, if you come from a very weak financial position, you don't even get started. You don't even, you don't even make the effort. So very excited about this project and opportunities it presents in terms of the operation. I know the sheriff's staff, I'm sure they're very excited about it as well. And as Supervisor Ennis, our chairman, said, you know, congratulations to our staff, congratulations to Vanner for the work that they did, doing a lot to bring this project to the level where it is today. And very exciting, especially in light of, as you say, other opening bids not faring nearly so well, and here only having two bidders, and yet both very competitive bids. One, almost a million dollars under the engineer's estimate, and the other one, just 300,000, which of a project of this magnitude is virtually on the target. So great project and good work by all involved, and we look forward to the groundbreaking in June 8th.
Great, thank you.
I want to make it real clear, we've talked about financing, but we're building this jail without borrowing any money. I want to make that really clear, that we are in a position that we were able to make the matching funds out of funds that we have saved from other projects.
And another thing, I have to congratulate everybody, because I was in Sacramento that day that the, we went up for the grant. And we're seeing many people scurrying around in there from other counties that didn't have all their Ts crossed and their Is dotted. But Tulare County was on task, and they did it. We were approved from the first deal. So, great job, guys. Great job.
One last couple of words, no change orders.
Oh, you dreamer.
Mr. Chair, is there any public comment on the sign?
Any public comment on, from the public on the new jail facility? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for approval.
Chair, I'd be glad to motion to approve this.
All seconded. Moved by Supervisor Cox, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. The vote is unanimous. Thank you, guys. Thanks for your good work. Appreciate it. Okay, move on to item number 25, Closeout of Strategic Growth Council Sustainable Communities Planning Grant, number 3012-589. Kara?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Chairman, County Administrative Officer, County Counsel, Keria Martinez with the Resource Management Agency. And today I will be presenting on the ALPOG Allensworth Regional Water and Metheny Track Feasibility Study. This is a closeout of a Strategic Growth Council grant we received. This is an overview of the presentation, the project description, the funding sources. I will go, later go on the feasibility report for ALPOG and Allensworth, Metheny Track report, acknowledgements, requests, board action, comments, questions, and discussion. To start the presentation, I wanted to touch on the funding for this project and why we are bringing forward two reports in one presentation. In 2012, we actually applied for Strategic Growth Council Planning Grant, and we borrowed approximately $675,000 to do two reports. The first project was the ALPOG Allensworth and Angiola Water Feasibility Report, also known as the AAA. Engineers evaluated, and it was determined early on that we would not be able to take water from the Angiola Water District, so the AAA project then became the AA project. The second part of the presentation is the Metheny Track Waste Water Feasibility Report. There's actually an additional funding source for the Metheny Track Waste Water Feasibility Report. We awarded the Strategic Growth Council about 210 for Metheny Track. But later on that year in 2012, we applied for additional grant from the Clean Water State Revolving Funds to actually submit a finance application environmental for the Metheny Track project. Flair County is the lead agency for both studies, and it provides solutions to improving water supplies in ALPOG, Allensworth, and Metheny Track. So for the ALPOG Allensworth Regional Water Feasibility Study, just a little bit of background, in 2002, the U.S. EPA adopted a reduced standard for arsenic in drinking water to 10 micrograms per liter, before it was 50 micrograms per liter. The groundwater well sources that supply ALPOG and Allensworth contain levels of arsenic above the 10 micrograms per liter. In December 2008, ALPOG was actually issued a compliance order by the State Department of Public Health for providing public water that exceeded the acceptable levels of arsenic. ALPOG and Allensworth must correct arsenic levels by 2018. This report looks at the most technical managerial and feasible solution for both residents of ALPOG and Allensworth. The study area includes the ALPOG Community Service District, Allensworth Community Service District service areas, and the Angiola Water District service area. At this time, I would like to introduce Ross Miller, who will talk about the various recommendations.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, Mr. CAO and County Counsel. I'm Ross Miller, an engineer with the Resource Management Agency. As we began evaluating the options for water supply for these communities, together with our consultant... together with our consultant AECOM and our interested stakeholders, we identified 23 different options for providing the community with water. The five best options are presented on the slide here. The options were reviewed for their feasibility, their viability, technical considerations, cost, as well as other factors. The, as I said, the five best options are presented on this slide. One option was to provide new wells in ALPA with a connection to Allensworth with arsenic treatment in ALPA, and the water then shipped to Allensworth. Another was to provide new wells east of Highway 41 without arsenic treatment under the belief that there was good water without exceeding the MCL for arsenic in that area.
Ross, is that Highway 41 or 43?
43.
Okay, thank you.
We apologize for that. Another option was to provide new wells and arsenic treatment within each community, as well as arsenic treatment in Allensworth, and new wells with a water shipped to ALPA from there. And lastly, arsenic treatment east of Highway 43 for both communities. The dollar values on there present a net present worth of these looking at, I believe, 30 years of operations and maintenance for these systems. And as you can see, sorry, the preferred option was actually not the most cost-effective. And the reason for that, the second option involved a significant gamble and the potential that the water quality could change over time or that we may not even be able to achieve that water quality from the get-go. And as you can see, once arsenic treatment is provided there, as shown in option five, it, that option really does not become the cost-effective. And the reason it's significantly cheaper to do the treatment in ALPA with water shipped to Allensworth is there's a significantly higher water demand in ALPA than in Allensworth. So it's significantly less water that is shipped in that process.
At the direction of the board, we did extensive community outreach. We had a lot of technical solutions, and technical solutions tend to cost a lot of money, so we usually do not get buy-in from the community. So our primary goal was to help the communities understand the different alternatives. With the assistance of Rural Community Assistant Corporation, RCAC, and Self-Help Enterprises, we held over 25 community meetings with the Allensworth Community Service District and the ALPOG Community Service District, and also additional standalone meetings. RCAC also looked at the governmental piece, which I will later discuss in this presentation. These meetings were late in the evening. If a community wanted a meeting, we were there. Sometimes we'd only have like three members present, however, we still stayed and really made sure that the community understood both projects, and we had both on board for the solution.
As I mentioned earlier, the recommended solution, after reviewing the 23 options, was to provide an arsenic treatment plant in ALPA with new wells to serve both ALPA and Allensworth using water from the ALPA area. As part of this, our consultant AECOM also evaluated the option for using solar power as part of this project and estimated that the electricity cost could be reduced by 80%. Further, there may be grant funding available to provide this solar, the solar paneling here. The estimated cost is $14.7 million for capital, and this is not including an additional $5 million that would be needed for system improvements in the two communities and new water meters as well. The $5 million was excluded because it was applicable to all of the options, no matter which alternative was selected of those five, or of the 23 as well. Further, we are asking as part of our request later on that the board approve CEQA exemptions for these projects. One for the feasibility study and another for the future construction project.
This study also looks at the governance. RCAC studied the governance portion of this grant, and it was also determined that if the project should move forward, governance would have, one, either the community service district merge, do a memorandum of understanding, or joint of powers. Both community services are in agreeance with this. This would not be a county governance structure. For funding sources, there's the Department of Water Resources and/or the USDA. As a matter of fact, our grants manager, Eric Coyne, is actually in Sacramento, along with other members of your staff, exploring fund possibilities for these projects.
Before we go into the next project, just a quick question. I remember when this began, there was a thought that Angiola had good water, and so the ability to bring Angiola water down to these districts would be a viable option. But I'd never found out what, because you just indicated summarily that it was not a viable option. So I'm just curious what happened with that.
Well, that was actually considered as part of the 23 options, and it was just not cost-effective, nor was it...
Transport of the water.
Pardon?
Transport of the water was too great a cost?
It was significantly more expensive to transport it there than it was to provide the wells in either community. As well, there was not a lot of community support for that option.
Okay, so the next project we're going to present is the Metheny Track wastewater feasibility report. Background, this project was funded for the purpose of evaluating alternatives to address the failing septic systems in Metheny Track. Currently, the community is home to over 1,200 residents and nearly 300 homes. The track is on sewer and relies on individual septic systems. The current septic systems onsite have insufficient space to support effective leaching. Additionally, average lot size in Metheny Track are about 6,000 square feet. Tulare County's standard four minimum lot sizes for septic system is about 12,000 square feet. These study areas, Metheny Track, here in Tulare County, outside of Tulare.
As part of this with our consultant, four main alternatives were identified and studied. The first was to the creation of onsite, the improvement of onsite septic tanks or replacement thereof, as well as a septic maintenance district. And this option was actually very expensive and did not provide the best treatment as well. The second option was a gravity collection system through the community and with the idea that it would eventually be, or the wastewater would then be sent to the city of Tulare for treatment as part of their residential, their residential sewage treatment plant. We also considered the option of a standalone wastewater treatment facility for this community, which was, which would not provide as good of treatment, nor would it be as cost-effective as consolidation with the city of Tulare. And lastly, we considered no project, though this was deemed not viable because it would not address any of the issues or concerns that the community faces.
I wanted to add one point, is the state water board sees re-regionalization as a key point, and we understand that the city of Tulare is going through a similar process right now by having to provide water to the Metheny Track residents. So our selected alternative was the consolidation with the city of Tulare. It is important to understand that everyone is in agreeance with this. The residents, advocates, county staff, except the city of Tulare. Our consulting program, Pritchard, has tried to make cooperation to obtain information for the report. However, city leadership has made it clear over months that they are not interested in providing sewer to the Metheny Track residents. For community outreach, Leadership Counsel really stepped it up and did, held various meetings, and the steering committee, they did door-to-door and phone polling just to make sure everyone in the Metheny Track community understood the project and this selected alternative.
As discussed before, the recommended solution was the consolidation with the city of Tulare, which is of course contingent upon cooperation from the city of Tulare and accepting these sanitary sewer flows from the Metheny Track. This was, in our review, the most cost-effective option, and it actually provided the best technical solution. However, there was a major political hurdle, as we have mentioned.
Quick question on that particular issue. I noticed that the estimated cost included wastewater collection system, connection to the city's existing sewer farm, contingent engineering, and so forth. My question really was, I, I can somewhat understand the city of Tulare's reluctance to want to bring on additional sewer people, because generally speaking, that ties directly back to economic development. So they may have excess capacity in their system now, but if they have plans in the future to want it, I know that over the years, they've tried to develop animal, you know, packing, cattle, meat packaging programs, so forth, which are heavily water-intensive type of systems, a lot of sewage. Because I mean, to me, if you're going to try to entice the city to get engaged in this, it seems like the cost estimate needs to include enhanced or increased capacity to the city of Tulare if they're going to be interested in it, because otherwise, you're just, you're bringing a little bit of revenue in, but you're not doing anything to provide them with additional capacity. Was there any thought given to that?
No, this number does actually include the necessary upgrades to their wastewater treatment.
Oh, okay. I think that's an important facet. I think it's, I don't see it up on that list, but to me, that would be, if you're going to encourage them to participate, it's not like you would need to do that.
Yeah, we did not expressly call that out here, but that was part of the consideration there. And further, the Metheny Track's waste, I believe, would count for roughly 1.5% of the residential sewage flow in the city. And the plant you discussed is actually treated by their industrial treatment plant, which they have expressed... Pardon?
Those are separate facilities, I think.
They are separate facilities, and they have expressed that they would not allow the residential to connect to the industrial sewer treatment, and we understand and we're willing to abide by that.
Like I mentioned earlier, there is an additional pot of money for Metheny Track. It was the State Water Resource Control Board that would later require environmental and a finance application. Should the city of Tulare change its mind, come supportive and connect sewer to the Metheny Track by July 1st of this year, then we will move forward with the plan specs and environmental, and submit a finance application for construction funds. And today, we are asking to close out the feasibility report part of this grant. Acknowledgements to, thank you to Tulare County Board of Supervisors, CAO staff, all our participating agencies. If at this time you can get up, as I call your name, Leadership Counsel, RCAC, Self-Help Enterprises, Allensworth Community Service District, ALPOG, AECOM, who worked on the ALPOG Allensworth feasibility report, and all RMA staff who helped on this project.
I'd also like to thank our helping program, Pritchard, who is not here today.
So the request is to adopt and certify the ALPOG Allensworth Regional Water System feasibility study as accurate. Adopt and certify the project feasibility report for Metheny Track wastewater system as accurate. Adopt and certify special provision proposal and contract for the construction of Metheny Track sewer improvement project as accurate. Adopt a statutory CEQA exemption for the ALPOG Allensworth Regional Water Systems feasibility study. Adopt a statutory, CEQA exemption for Metheny Track wastewater study feasibility, wastewater feasibility study. Adopt this statutory CEQA exemption for ALPOG Allensworth Regional Water System feasibility study construction project, and direct the environmental assessment officer or designate to file all notices of exemption with the Tulare County clerk. At this time, any questions, comments?
Questions, comments? Supervisor Cox?
Just a quick comment. You know, I'm all about helping communities help themselves, but if we ever start steering towards owning another water or sewer system as a county, I will never, mark my words, never support another one of those efforts for the county to own a system. I feel 100% behind what we're doing. We can help them, help themselves, help them write the grants, help them facilitate the grant, but if it ever comes down to owning, I will never support that again.
Supervisor Woodley?
Just to comment on the sewer system for Metheny and their issues. Of course, connecting them to the city water of Tulare is very critical to the health of the people who live in that community, because no longer are we going to have people with individual wells that are maybe very close to aged septic systems, which are not modernly designed or engineered. But going forward, one thought that comes to my mind is, of course, and you have a picture there of, I don't know if that's an existing system where you've got water actually spilling over from an existing sewer, septic system, showing obviously a major defect and a health hazard. Are there requirements for people to put in their own health, put in their own new septic systems? You know, and that's another, we've talked, you know, I don't, going forward, unless Tulare decides to change its mind, we still have to deal with these issues today. And when you have sewer systems or septic systems which are, are failing, then at the end of the day, we're going to have to take action from a code compliance standpoint to require those to be corrected. And I, and I raise this because I'm also very, very concerned about the state water board coming back with new rules and regulations, which we've had presented to us before at this board, that are requiring new systems to be very, very expensive, because they're no longer, they're, our engineered systems, at least we don't think so at this point in time. I think we need to test this as we move forward. But the engineered systems of the past, where we relied upon the passive system, which have been very effective, the water board in its infinite wisdom is saying we need to put in these, these non-passive systems that require pumps and motors, and are going to be three times as expensive to install and have annual expenses and so forth. My point in saying all this is, if we can do it under the old system, before we have to move to a new system, we better move quickly because that's going to change the cost factor significantly and still deal with an immediate problem.
Supervisor Vanderpool? I was just going to make the comment that I'm really glad that we did some significant community outreach to make sure that the residents in all of these affected communities were included and informed about what these studies would achieve and what they were doing. I think that having these feasibility studies completed are critical, because when money does fall out of the sky from different programs or different purposes, and as some of my colleagues were talking about earlier, there may not be very much money falling out of the sky. But if there is feasibility studies, and this documentation is always required, and having these hurdles already crossed, when that situation might come, will help these projects move forward in a more expeditious fashion. But, you know, to what Supervisor Cox was saying, I know that in Metheny Track, for example, residents there are seriously looking at forming a CSD or forming some kind of special district to really start taking care of some of these amenities that they would like to have in their community. And that is what I have been encouraging them to do. And I know that in ALPA and Allensworth, there are those existing districts. But consolidation, if that would be more economically efficient for the residents, I think they would definitely look towards that, because I think the two communities realize they can both benefit each other. And, and I'm glad to see that they've kind of pulled out the piece that made for some political unrest in the initial study leading to the AA project instead of the AAA. So thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation report and trying to get as much done as you did while undertaking this effort.
We have had several pieces of legislation proposed about septic systems. And quite honestly, state of California, the environmental people are going to go after these septic systems at some time in the future. And that's going to cause an extreme problem, not only in Metheny Track, but other, what we call Hamlets, that are on septic tanks. And I don't know how we're going to be able to address that. So I'm glad the study's done. When money falls out of the sky, you better be able, I mean, ready to catch it. And I want to thank the people who gave us the grant to go forward with getting this groundwork done. And I think we definitely will be ready if something happens.
Mr. Chair, and I'd also like to make sure we open up to public comments. Anybody from the audience want to speak for this item? Come up and tell us your name and your address for records, please.
Good morning.
Pull the mic down.
Good morning. My name is Merced Barrera. I am from Leadership Counsel for Justice and Accountability.
Bueno dias. Mi nombre es Reyna El Zapalma, y vengo representando a Martine Strack.
And this is Reyna Palma, and she's a resident of Metheny Track.
Y estoy aquí para poner la propuesta para el drenaje, porque en realidad lo necesitamos. Hay muchas diferencias, por ejemplo, cuando se les rebasa las personas, y hay mal olor para toda la comunidad. para toda la comunidad.
So I'm here to support this feasibility study, because I think it's very necessary in our community. And I've seen, for example, when there's really bad odors and the drains and septic tanks get overflowed, for example.
Y también la contaminación para el agua, el ambiente, y todo eso es una suciedad. Es muy necesario.
And it's also very disgusting and really bad for the environment when these systems fail and they start leaching. And so that's why I feel that it's very, this is very needed. Drain systems are very needed.
Por favor, se los pido, que hagan algo por nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
I plead that you please help us and do something for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you.
Also, I just wanted to share as well, my name is Merced, as I had mentioned, and I was one of the folks that were doing the outreach along with Reina and other residents, especially those involved in the Metheny Track Committee. And during the door-to-door canvassing, we encountered many of the same sentiments from all of the residents. They are all worried about their failing septic systems. And then also, when we gave the presentation on February 6th, we got a lot of input from the community, and of course, everyone voted for alternative number two to consolidate with the city of Tulare. And they were especially concerned, being that they had seen the accidents that could happen. For example, the emergency that occurred in Plainview, they didn't want, they don't want that to occur in their community. And then also, some of their concerns were also that their drains are backing up, and then, as mentioned by the county, their lots are too small to begin to comply with the new ordinances as far as septic tanks are concerned. And then also, even with the estimated $45 monthly fee, they didn't hesitate to point out that this sewage system is, wastewater system is one of their top priorities, and they wouldn't have a problem paying that to the city of Tulare. And so Leadership Council and the residents of Metheny Track and the Metheny Track Committee would like the Board of Supervisors to know that we support the feasibility study and that we hope that we can work together to bring a solution to Metheny Track. Thank you.
Good morning to the board and to the members of the audience. My name is Denise Kadara, I'm from the community of Allensworth. And first of all, I'd like to thank Supervisor Vanderpool for appointing me back in October 2011 to serve on the Tulare Lake Basin Water Study for Disadvantaged Communities, which opened up the opportunity that is before us today. At the time, when that process got underway, there was an opportunity to apply for strategic growth funds, and a community such as ours was perfect for it. We had a meeting, and there were all kinds of reasons of why we couldn't do the project, and my statement to the supervisor was, we cannot afford not to do the project. Here we are today with a study that's been complete. We've had a lot of meetings in the communities. We're doing what the state board is recommending that we do, look at a regional approach, look at consolidation, and I think we've addressed both of those items to where we could work together for a solution to address the water situation in our community. The primary concern here is a human right to safe drinking water. That's what the proposal is for. The study has indicated that, and we're ready to move forward in anticipation that funding will become available for us to move this project forward. Falling out of the sky, wherever it might come from, but we still have communities that have dire needs, and ignoring them or neglecting them does not change the picture of the people that are constituents in your community. So I appreciate the 5-0 vote we got back in 2012 for this effort, and I'm looking forward to the same opportunity today. I thank you for your support. I thank the help of Self-Help Enterprises for RCAC, and the communities that just came out and worked. It wasn't an easy task, and I really want to thank Eric Koin for his entiring efforts to try to help make this project work. I commend you. I don't think you'll be making a bad decision to vote 5-0 again, because both of those communities are trying to make headways. We have unique attractions in our community with the state historic park, with the wetlands, and we have activities that are going on that will really bring forth economic opportunity. You don't see it today, but the decision you will make today will help bring forth economic development opportunity in the community, where we will be self-sustaining and will be able to manage our own business. Thank you very much, and I hope you consider our request.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this issue? Well, I think it's very important that this groundwork that we've laid is in place, so that when the money does appear, the biggest part is having the project ready to go, to have the money to build it. So, great, great job.
Mr. Chairman, I would be glad to make the motion to approve as requested, and just to comment, I believe that the funding for the water project is probably much more probable, given the current status of things today. Sewer is a different matter, but I think we're going to see pressure brought to bear on sewers, much like we have seen on water in the future. So that's going to be addressed, I believe. Anyway, glad to move.
I'll second that motion. Okay, move by Supervisor Wordley, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. 5-0 vote, the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is late. How long is this CEQA document due for? We have a five-year tie, is there a clock start?
Forever, unless there are changes.
Forever, unless there are changes. That's great. Good news. Thank you.
Okay, that pretty well concludes our open session, the Board of Supervisors. Do we have need for closed session, Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. You have Items A through E on your board's closed session agenda. It's possible there will be an announcement.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our open board.